Good evening and welcome to the March 6 meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency, and West Sacramento Financing Authority. Let the record show Mayor Cabaldin is out of town today, so as Mayor Pro Tem, I'm honored to be chairing the meeting tonight. We did meet in closed session. I'll ask the city attorney to please report out.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. I just know that council met in closed session on two items, both having to do with litigation, one substantial exposure, and one the possibility of initiation. No actions were taken.
Thank you. As we do in every meeting, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Councilmember Christoph to please lead us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Thank you. As we start tonight's meeting, as always, anyone wishing to address the council could fill out one of the yellow request-to-speak forms. They're all over on the side table. And if you would please turn those in to our city clerk, we'd ask that you please turn those in prior to the end of the staff report for that item. And as we get those cards, I'll read them off and ask those to speak in the order that they are presented to me, so in that order. Also, we do have a three-minute clock for those who do choose to speak, and we ask you to be mindful of the time, so there's fairness to everyone, and everybody has an opportunity to speak. And finally, for those who are speaking, we ask that you please keep your phones on silent. Try not to, as much as possible, to speak or interrupt the speakers, and not to interrupt, or applaud, or any other activity during those speakers. So moving on to today's agenda is first, 1A, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. As we know, the council is prohibited from discussing these issues or deliberating these issues brought on because they're not on the agenda. However, you feel free to speak. There's items that the staff can answer for you offline. They will do that. But moving on for this is Lynn Connor. After Lynn, we'll have Jim Brewer. Good evening.
My name is Lynn Connor. I'm here in West Sacramento.
I'm sorry. Would you get closer and make sure the microphone at the base is on? Go ahead.
I don't know how to make sure.
It's on.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm a resident of West Sacramento, and I'm here tonight because of the recent ordinance, the cry wolf, I believe you refer to it as. This is a bad ordinance. It's a bad law. It makes us less safe. It puts us all at risk. I do not live in what I consider to be a safe neighborhood. I spoke with this ordinance to a neighbor who lives a few doors down from me, who is a senior citizen, a woman who lives alone. She related an incident to me. Sometime ago, there was someone in her backyard. She heard a noise. She set off her alarm on purpose. That scared off whoever it was. By the time the police arrived, there was no evidence that anyone was trying to create any kind of problems or commit a crime. According to this, that would fall under the heading of a false alarm. After two false alarms, we will get charged $200 for each false alarm, and after five, we will not be allowed to have an alarm. There are several problems with this. If your alarm is monitored, most likely you are on a contract, so you will still be required to pay for that monitoring, even though you do not have an alarm at all. Furthermore, it's very easy to set off a lot of security alarms. I recently left my keys and had to call a locksmith. I was rather astonished at how fast he was able to gain access to my home. Most alarms, at least home alarms, and probably business alarms also, are set off by merely jarring the door. All a missstrient would have to do is pick a lock twice, and after that, the business owner or the homeowner starts paying. And after five, you can just come in whenever nobody is there. So this is just a bad solution to the problem. I currently live on a block where last week, the police did a raid a few houses down from me and on the same block but the next street over. And I'm told that this had something to do with some kind of burglary or theft ring. Directly behind me is a house that is vacant. Across the street from me is a park. To one side of me is a house that will be vacant in a couple of weeks. The other side are people who have done everything they can to harm me. The latest is that they have put a nail in my tire. They have slashed my tire. I do not feel safe in my own home, and I do not because of this. I do not feel that I can even set my alarm. I don't have $200 extra dollars in case the police decide that this is a false alarm. This is not good for business. It's not good for residents. If the police do not have time to respond to alarms, preventing us from having alarms may make your statistics look better, but it is not going to make us safer.
Connor, can I ask you to wrap it up?
I'm done.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming out tonight. I see our chief of police is here. If you have not spoken to them, I'd ask you maybe to step outside. He might give you some more information. It might be helpful to get some background on the ordinance. But thank you for coming out. Thank you, Chief. Next is Mr. Jim Brewer. There you are. And following Jim will be Bill Lowell.
Good evening, gentlemen, and folks in the audience. I'm president of the West Sacramento Historical Society, and tomorrow evening, after a long year and a half's of work, we have a grand opening of an art show across the street at the new community center. I think all of you in the front of the room have a little envelope. It just gives you a schedule of some of the events. It'll look like this. Those of you in the audience, this is the first time that the West Sacramento Historical Society has had a showing in the history or in the art gallery, 1075. We are so proud of this. I am so excited about bringing that to you. It took us a year, a lot of effort, a lot of research. We found some wonderful stories here based in West Sacramento, and it's our journey, the first families of East Yolo County, and in it, we're honoring the Native Americans that were here. And this covers a span of years from like just about 1900 through 1960, '65, somewhere in that range. So a lot of memories were found, a lot of folks that could relate their memories to us, and I just want to encourage everyone who'll be there for a month, please come and enjoy it. It is a real sight. Just got it hung up today. Really excited. And I've still got a minute and 45 seconds, and if someone would relay back to the mayor, sorry, he isn't here tonight, because I wanted to give back my extra time that I took last time I was here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a... I'm sorry? I think everybody up there has some. And we have some on the website, so please follow up.
Thanks, Jim. Mr. Lowell, Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. I got to thinking about what I said last time regarding my preference for a bridge from Southport to South Sacramento and back, rather than Broadway 15th Street Bridge. And I thought to myself, well, okay, let them have it that way. But given the change in the times, and the governor having eliminated the redevelopment agency, we got to come up with a name for an agency of a different name but would function similar to what we had before. And it was one of the major developers over here that gave me this idea regarding the Southport-South Sacramento Bridge. So I'm saying, let's apply that same logic over here. Let them go ahead and build a Broadway 15th Street Bridge, and then each subsequent development after that's approved and so forth, let them pay the equivalent of $15,000 per lot. And if it's a much bigger lot, then they would pay more for the privilege of all that other hookup infrastructure and so forth. And then the money they pay into would be put into a special fund that would eventually be enough to build a Southport-South Sacramento Bridge. And after that's built, and more businesses and so forth build out there and so forth, why, that could, those new buildings and businesses and so forth, they could continue to rebuild that fund for future development and maintenance thereof. But we got to figure out a way of preventing the governor from coming back later on and taking it just to balance the state budget. So I'm sure we've got legal minds in this room that can, I don't want to say outsmart the governor, but make the governor realize that this would not only help both sides of the river here, but applied statewide, why we could become more financially independent. And better than just staying, laying back and say, oh, we can't do this, when we can come up with ways to make it happen. And there's plenty of money being made by developers who get land rezoned, and it becomes worth a lot more. The reason why they can't start sharing a little bit of that profit and helping development go on, and special treatment should be given to the developers who build something and get it working so it actually does something for us, rather than the developers that just buy up the land and get it rezoned and just sit on it indefinitely. So again, there should be an incentive there to get something built and see some actual improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, no other requests to speak on item 1A, so move on to 1B, which is council communications and board assignments. Any reports? Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, the housing development, or the Yolo County Housing Met on February 21, and aside from routine reports, the one report that was of probably significance is probably already happening. That's in the event the sequester occurred, which it has. They're looking at at least a 5% cut to Yolo County housing. And in addition, about 69% of the grants they expected or anticipated will not be received. And as you probably know, the Yolo County Housing operates on a very slim margin, and this is going to hurt already. The federal government doesn't pay for maintenance on any kind of housing. It's more the acquisition. So this is definitely, it's going to be an issue as we move forward this year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johansson. Mr. Christoph?
Very briefly, Yolo County LAFCO met last week, and the issue of the animal shelter and all of the jurisdictions coming up with a way in order to make our existing animal control facility a work better for everybody. It's a very expensive endeavor for the city of West Sacramento, for the city of Woodland, and so we have some issues and some concerns. One of the things we're talking about doing, and that is putting a joint powers agreement together. And with that joint powers agreement comes some other issues as far as is how to fund it and how to make it a better place. A number of people think we euthanize our animals way too much. And so part of that JPA, though, is really going to be, the start of it will be the city manager, so the various cities. They will set things in place so that something can eventually come to fruition as far as a JPA is concerned. A number of people are asking for the JPA to have public members on it, which I concur with. I think that's the right approach. But at the same time, I don't think the original formation of the JPA ought to have public members on it. Let's create the JPA first without public members, and then when the JPA is up and running and doing whatever JPA is going to do, then of course you have to have public participation, and I think it is a good idea to have public members. One of the things that I would like our staff to look into, and that is, what would the cost be for us to join the city of Sacramento? And so I'm going to ask staff to look into that issue for me, just so that, in essence, I have a fallback position in case the JPA really doesn't work out well as far as West Sacramento, Woodland, Davis, and Winters are concerned. So I'd just like to know that data.
Any other communications? I do have an update on the Yolo County Habitat Natural Community Conservation Plan and Joint Powers Authority, which I'm a board member of. We met last Wednesday, the 27th, in Woodland. I just want to give the council a little bit of a background, since the last time we spoke about this and acted upon funding that JPA through the development of a first draft of a plan. I just want to give the council that in that meeting, we had a number of different actions that we finalized and are continuing to move on. I want to reassure the council that very thorough financial oversight mechanisms are now in place. Petryah Marshand, who's our executive director, has done a phenomenal job of getting this JPA administratively in set and functioning well. As I said, there are financial oversight and financial controls in the place, things such as we solidified at the last meeting several contracts, all of which have performance clauses in them to make sure that they do meet their deadlines, to make sure they hit their milestones, or there are financial penalties involved, and renegotiate a lot of those contracts. So there's a lot of mechanisms like that in place. So I'm very proud of the work that they've done, and want to report that back to this body. I also wanted to let you know that it was a milestone at the last meeting because we actually started talking about substantive issues regarding actual conserving, conservation, and habitat conservation, which is something for the two years I've been on it, we have not really discussed. So in that meeting, we got a briefing, received a briefing regarding the agricultural conservation strategy, which was one of the key parts and philosophies around this, our heritage program. Being in Yolo County, we have an abundance of agricultural land, so part of the plan that's as proposed is to look at how we can use some of that land and for conservation purposes, which would be a first of its kind in the state. So anyway, we had a briefing on that. Right now, we are scheduled to complete the plan by June 30th. As we, at least, let me step back. We're going to complete a draft plan, and that is to get something out for public consumption, because nothing has been produced by this JPA. So we are committed to doing that. We're on plan to do that. All the member agencies, including Department of Fish and Wildlife, as well as the U.S. Agency, the federal agencies, have all signed or agreed to principles for working together. That is, we're going to respond quickly to these issues. So again, I feel very positive of where we are. Just want to report that back to this body, because we did make, the city did make an investment to fund this through June 30th, and I think we're going to try to get this on to the agenda in the April meeting, April 10th, to get a more thorough update with the executive director. But I just want to give that quick update. Also, because Mr. Brewer brought it up, Councilmember Johansson and I did attend on Saturday, the second birthday of our community center across the street. So we got a sneak preview at the exhibit he spoke about. Just want to commend staff for the great job that the Parks Department and everybody else did, and having the celebration. It was well-attended, and it was a really good event. So I just want to update the council on that as well. Any other communications? I hear none. I want to unsee his council appointments and reappointments. I think we have none. So we'll move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be discussed further or pulled? I had a question on item 3.
I got a question on 4.
We have 3 and 4. Any others? So we'll go ahead and ask question, item 3. Good evening, Chief. My only question is that I'm generally supportive of what's being proposed here regarding the approval, approving the letter of public convenience. I just had a question on the ABC license going to the new location, and is there any issue there regarding density of licenses in that area? I know that's been sort of one of the criteria that the force has looked at before in granting this.
You're correct.
So maybe get some background.
Thank you. Be happy to do that. You are correct. This license actually, a license that the location has come up previously, we recommended to you, this was over a year ago, that you deny that request for a letter of public convenience and necessity, and you did. And so now we're back with one, and we're asking you to, or recommending that you approve it. And so that's a very good question as to why. The area, the ABC assigns licenses, as you know, based on census tracts and the population within census tracts. And when you're over that particular number, it's called an overconcentration of licenses. And so both the census tracts that we're dealing with, the one where the new license would be if approved, is overconcentrated, and so is the one where on West Capitol Avenue, it includes West Capitol Avenue, is also overconcentrated. And so what we're doing really is switching licenses. We're lowering the number in one census tract and raising it in the other. And the reason we're doing that, we think that is a beneficial trade, a win-win. It pulls a license out of an area that, as you well know better than anybody else, is a challenged area with issues along West Capitol Avenue. So to have one less retail location selling in that area is something that we thought was very desirable and would be beneficial to the city. And allowing the license to go over to 15th and Jefferson, again, we thought it was a win for the city in the sense that we know that the owner-operator and the corporation, Arco, are planning on actually an entirely brand-new facility. And in their business model, this fits within their business model to have the license. And so for those reasons, that's why we're back this time recommending approval. The licensee, the applicant, worked very diligently, because when we met with them the first time, that is one option we suggest, that we would consider approving a license at that location if they could get a trade or a transfer of a license from a more impacted area. And so it's from a more impacted area going to a less impacted area.
Okay.
That's it in a nutshell.
Yep. Thank you. I always wanted to clarify that point. Thank you. Mr. Christoph, I had a question on item 4.
We got all kinds of people for this one. Wow. Hi, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Brought your big gun, Olin, huh?
Just in case.
In, as I read through the staff report, it talked about the Federal Transit Authority and them not having rules in place for some of the funding.
Yes. As you know, last year, the Congress approved a new transportation authorization bill, MAP 21. And as part of MAP 21, the Federal Transit Administration is developing new rules for their Small Starts project.
Right.
And so we, as we have been proceeding through this, part of the Downtown Riverfront Transit Study, they've been coming out slowly with new rules on the thing. And so we've been adapting the project as we go along. And so those rules haven't been finalized, and there's still some coming. So as those come forward, we adapt the plan to them.
Okay. So I guess one of the questions I had, are there up fun, I mean upfront, is there upfront funding necessary by the city of West Sacramento for the environmental processes, engineering, project management activities?
Well, our, the FTA had some funding left over from another transit project in Sacramento that had allowed the, well, the consortium, if you will, to utilize for this current phase one of the Downtown Riverfront Transit Study. And then there's funding left over for that project, and that funding is going to be used for it. Our matching funds of $40,000, which was originally approved in the CIP, has not, will not change.
Okay. And the other question I had was, in the middle of a paragraph, it says something to the effect that while the agreement still calls for a 50/50 split on maintenance facilities, a 1/3, 2/3 split on vehicle acquisition costs. Who's the 1/3, and who's the 2/3?
We're the 1/3, and Sacramento's the 2/3.
Very good.
And it says, based on vehicle miles. Previously, it had been more of a 50/50 split on everything, and we, that was when the project was, had roughly the same amount of miles on each side of the river. Now that it's been extended all the way to Midtown, there's 71% of the miles are on that side, and so they are bearing the larger burden of the cost.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Johansson, you had a comment or question?
Yeah. Mr. Lutz, has a maintenance facility issue been resolved, or is that still in flux?
Well, we're going to be, as we move into the environmental document, we're going to be looking at two locations. One location underneath the elevated portion of Highway 50, and then we're also going to be looking at the, an alternative location underneath Pioneer Bridge. And so that'll give us the flexibility when we adopt the final plan to look at both locations. Now, the location underneath the Pioneer Bridge, at least at this point, would require an additional commitment for the cost associated to construct that line in West Sacramento. So we would bear a larger cost for the maintenance location to be located there, because it would be, if you will, a first step in a starter line to the south. And so the maintenance cost, the cost of the maintenance facility doesn't change whether it's in Sacramento or West Sacramento. But in Sacramento, the track is already in place, because they would utilize existing light rail track to get to the maintenance facility. In West Sac, that doesn't exist. And so we would have to, we would have to bear the portion of that, at least as we've discussed now. Tentatively, we would have to bear the cost of that trackage from the Tower Bridge to the Pioneer Bridge.
Right. Does that alter the miles, the 2/3s, 1/3s?
It would, yes. We would have to come back and take a look at that. It could do that. It depends, you know, what that line is going to be used for. If we actually are going to be putting stops on that initially, yeah, we would, I would expect Sacramento would want to renegotiate things a bit. If we are, if it's just going to the maintenance facility for now, that might, we may not have to alter the split. We'll also have to look at other infrastructure needed, such as power and those types of things, and what that would, that additional trackage might require.
Right. But I don't think they've settled on the mode of streaker at this point, whether it's wireless or wired.
No, at this point, they have not. The wireless type has not yet been approved by FTA, but it, you know, it could be by the time that the, that the project is, goes into a full funding agreement, but...
Which could drastically affect the cost if it's without the overheads.
It could. And it has to mean a couple of things. Not only the technology, wireless technology, but the ADA requirements and the Build America requirement. So if those three things can be met, there's a possibility of use of those.
Right. And the consultants are looking at that?
Yes, to a certain extent. Given, FTA hasn't given any guidance yet on whether they would approve that. Right now, it's not permitted.
Right. But in anticipation of a possible approval, it'd probably be prudent to investigate that, I would think.
We could take a look at it.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
Yeah. Olin informs me that we've actually, we have committed to look at that technology.
Absolutely. Great. Appreciate it.
You came in handy. Thanks. Thanks, Mike. You know, and just to follow up, I think this was, the important part about this was, again, just the amount of engagement and support from both sides of the river and the two transportation districts in getting this project moving. And, you know, the goal is to get into the Small Starts Program, I think this year, right? We want to, yeah. So we want to get into this year. So, you know, I know we have another agenda item later on our riverfront in our downtown, and this is another big part of that. So any other items on the consent agenda for a question? We have a motion by Mr. Viegas, a second by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? So the consent agenda items move forward. So consent agenda items move forward. Moving on to item eight, which is a workshop on, I'm sorry, item nine, which is a proposed workshop, a workshop on a proposed public financing of a Riverfront Hotel Conference
We're going to pull up a PowerPoint slideshow here, so...
It says Phil here is going to present this, but it's actually you.
He's out of the country, so he asked me to stand in, so I'll do my best. I just wanted to point out Katie Jacobson, the project manager for this project, has been gracious enough to let finance go first tonight. Usually you have the presentation of the project and the finance comes sometime after. So we felt it was, the type of financing we're going to be discussing tonight is important enough for you to kind of get a handle on that and have some level of comfort for it. But, you know, tonight's presentation is the first of two that we'll, we'll be bringing to you on a private development proposal to construct a full-service Marriott Hotel on the, on the riverfront. This project is being proposed by a private developer, a development firm out of Dallas, Garfield Traub. And they are a firm that is a national real estate development firm. They have significant track record in public-private partnerships and in developing hotel projects such as this. And so what we wanted to talk to you about tonight is that this project is, is going to be very different from what was proposed in 2007 and 2010, the initiatives that were really city-led projects that would involve 100% finance and 100% city-owned facility. This is really a private, a private initiative. And what Garfield Traub is proposing is a public-private partnership where the city comes in to finance and own the conference center portion of the project. The conference center is viewed as a, as a basic public infrastructure that would draw events and economic activity to the area. And under the schedule that the developer provided to us, they would be looking at constructing this conference center, starting early next year with an opening in late 2016. And you're, I just wanted to point out that the development firm is not here, you know, the Dallas-based members are not here tonight, but we do have Tony Gianoni of the Christopher Company and Brian Larson of Halo Hospitality who are here. They're the local representatives of the firm. There they are back there. So moving forward, let's see, get the handle on this clicker here. The project itself is similar to what was proposed in the past in terms of being roughly, it's a 343-room, full-service hotel. It would be a high-rise on a one-third acre. The conference center would be 20,000 square feet. Again, it includes elements like a grand ballroom, junior ballroom, breakout rooms. We are talking with this project of a, of a major parking structure with 493 spaces. And that's largely due to the requirements in the bridge district that you go to structured parking. Then there would be the other amenities, integration with the Riverwalk. There would be a restaurant, spa and other, other elements such as that. The site itself is a 2.7-acre site. It's a primary development site just south of Tower Bridge on the Sacramento River. It's within the bridge district, across from Riley Field. It would be integrated with the Riverwalk Park. Nearby, you have adjacent residential development that is under construction and a number of projects that would be under construction or completed by the time the hotel and conference center are open. But this would be the first commercial project in the bridge district and so it represents a new level of development. But again, it would benefit from the substantial development the city has made in the bridge district, infrastructure improvements that were included last year. I know it'd also be served by the future streetcar project that we, we actually just talked about on the agenda, that, that streetcar would connect to the capital in downtown Sacramento. And of course, it would be a catalyst for development of the surrounding property. In terms of schedule tonight, you know, we're not going to be presenting a detailed schedule in terms of the development of the project. That is going to come at the meeting on March 20th and that's where you'll get other details about the project. So what we're looking at is a proposal that we use, the West Sacramento Financing Authority, to issue bonds to construct the conference center. And this is a little different again than what we were looking at a few years ago where the bonds were anticipated to be revenue bonds and solely secured by revenue produced by the hotel. This would be a lease-type structure, similar to what was used for construction of City Hall and for Fire Station 45. You know, since we just refunded those, those bonds, you know, we've dealt with this type of financing recently. And the security would be an annually appropriated lease payment from the city's general fund. And we're not looking at using existing general fund monies. The project would be funded by four, four types of revenue that would be generated by, by the hotel project and the conference center. One is transit occupancy tax, which is approximately a 12% levy on gross revenues of the hotel, of the hotel room revenues. We'd be looking at that portion of property tax that comes back to Fund 106. Again, that would be what we formerly called redevelopment tax increment, but what is now a tax entity distribution that comes back to the city. And then we'd be looking at a 2% surcharge on hotel rooms that the developer would agree to. And that would roughly equate to, let's say, a 14% TOT. And so that's similar to what you have in the competitive set of hotels that we're looking at. And then you'd also have conference center lease payments. And what we've used in our analysis so far is a lease payment that was proposed by the developer, but we haven't yet negotiated what the final lease payments would be. And looking at the proposal, we put together our hotel finance team. Again, these are consultants who have been working with us for a few years, looking at the hotel project. And so I just point out, you know, Piper Jaffrey is an underwriter, has been involved since 2007. And then we also have Cutac Rock as bond counsel. We brought in Economic Planning Systems to do a little tax revenue analysis for us. And then Ken Decker, our financial advisor is in the audience to help me answer any difficult questions that may come my way tonight. In terms of the project budget, which, what the developer's proposing is a $131 million project. You can see the breakdown there between private and public capital. So our portion would be roughly 23% of the total budget amount, our participation. I've talked about the conference center at $28 million in terms of our level of participation, but there's also a purchase of spaces within a private parking garage that we'd be looking at. We're not going to be covering that tonight. That's not something that we would use lease revenue financing to do, but it is something that we'll come back at the next meeting and discuss in more detail. The private, private financing assumptions are very important because without this, we don't have a project. So we need to be certain that the private financing is in place before the city would issue bonds for the conference center portion of the project. So the typical private financing elements you see before you, a construction loan from, from a bank, from a lender, private equity coming in along, along with that loan. And what's different and what's kind of unique about this is EB5 financing is being looked at. And this is short-term financing that is basically based on a federal program which authorizes, really, it incentivizes foreign investment to come into the country to invest in projects. And the foreign investors that come into the project basically get work visas or we call them green cards. And the formula for that is based on job creation. And it's, it's a somewhat complicated type of financing. We, we haven't experienced it before, so we have a lot of questions about it and we have concerns about the timing. EB5 financing involves syndication to bring in investors from foreign countries and that takes some time. So, you know, we have some concerns about that. And then in terms of Marriott key money, that's something we are familiar with. Marriott proposed that on the previous deal. It's basically their investment in the project that's amortized over a long period of time, typically somewhere between 15 and 30 years. And then just, you know, getting into the public financing, what we're looking at, what we would structure is a 30-year lease for the, for the conference facility. And like I said earlier, the lease payments would be appropriated annually from the general fund. There'd be a reserve fund that would be established out of the issuance. That's, that's pretty typical and that sits with the trustee. It covers any potential shortages in the future. There would be 24 months of capitalized interest assumed. One of the things that we're going to get into later is whether we would issue the bonds upfront or later. But if we issue the bonds upfront, capitalized interest is necessary to make interest payments during the construction period. Level debt service is typically what we try to do. And then we've looked at something called, what we're calling a supplemental debt service fund, which is an additional debt service fund beyond the reserve fund that's set up initially out of the bond issuance. And it would be set up in, in a different manner and we'll get into that in a minute. But it's going to provide added security and buffer to the city's general fund. And then the, kind of lastly, the issue that we, we looked at is this lease revenue financing is only possible if the marketplace will, will go along with, with the proposal. And so what, what, let's say Standard and Poor's looks at is not necessarily whether the Marriott Hotel is going to do well, whether that's a good bet, but whether the city's finances can support those lease payments and, and whether, you know, we'll be able to take on that debt in addition to any debt that we have outstanding right now. So we did go through the process of, of bringing in Standard and Poor's to do a special evaluation of this project. And, and the key question for us was what impact would the issuance of $33.4 million for the conference center have on our credit? And Marriott, and Standard and Poor's came back with a reaffirmation of our A-stable rating. So that was a really good sign to us and it gave us a lot of comfort. I think that if we, if Standard and Poor's came back and they said something like that would knock you down a couple notches, it might, it might change staff's willingness to go forward with this type of, of financing. This, this chart's a little, a little hard to read up there, but what we, what we did is we, we did an estimation of the hotel-generated revenues that would be created by the, the items I outlined earlier. The transit occupancy tax is 2%, surcharge. We've lumped them together, so it just says 14% TOT. The property tax, the convention lease. And then those final three columns are the average daily rate for hotel rooms and occupancy. And that gives you a total room revenue. And the revenues that we're looking at are largely based on those gross room revenues that are developed by the hotel. So we wanted to basically validate what those revenues would be. And we actually brought in Economic Planning Systems to, to do their own kind of third-party analysis of this. What you see before you is prepared by Piper Jaffrey, but I can tell you that the EPS analysis came up with similar results and gave us some sense of comfort that the revenues that would be necessary would be there, you know, if, if the hotel performs at the level that, that we think it will, what the developer's proposing. This next chart just shows debt service coverage. And so in this concept, we're really looking at, you know, the, the second column there just brings over the total tax collections that would be coming to the city. Third column is what we project debt service to be, which is about 2.2 million annually. And then the difference are the revenues that aren't necessary to make those lease payments that would go back to the city's general fund. And so, you know, as you can see from the chart, we've got very good coverages. 2017 is the first year, first full year of operation. And we have, you know, a positive greater than one coverage. And as you get into, you know, year four of operations, your, your coverage is enhanced significantly. But what I point out is that you begin to accrue these, these excess funds into some, you know, some account where it goes, that, that, that would be a decision to be made. But one thing we've looked at is if we wanted to create the supplemental reserve I talked about earlier, you know, by, you know, by basically year four, you would have enough funds coming in from your excess revenues to fully fund that supplemental reserve if you wanted, if you wanted to do it that way. But, you know, again, what this did is, is it told us another thing, which is if you look over the life of, of the project, you know, you have 40, 49 million, almost $50 million being generated to the city's general fund from the project. So what we look at is, is, is the financial benefit of investing in the hotel project, assuming it's successful, would be revenues coming back to the city's general fund in the amount you see in front of you. Again, while, while it could be, have a great upside, we're very, we're very concerned, very cognizant that there are risks to the city's general fund when you enter into debt like this. And so what the finance team looked at is these reserve bucket concepts. And this is very similar to what the city council dealt with back in 1999 with the Riley Field financing, where the city was, 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 was involved in, in the issues of debt there and was in, in a role where there was some risk to the city. And at that time, reserve buckets were established as part of the financing to create a buffer to protect the city's general fund. So just to go through, you know, I talked about the primary reserve fund that comes out of the issuance that's roughly one year's annual debt service. That's something you really can't touch because if you do, it'll ding your credit rating. So it does sit there with the trustee and it usually sits there for the life of the bonds and, you know, maybe pays your last year debt service. But, you know, we can't rely on that as, as a usable reserve bucket should there be shortfalls. So our supplemental reserve fund, or what we call reserve bucket number two, would be critical. And again, it's, it would be held by the city. It would be, it could be appropriated, as is the guarantee for Riley Field. It could be appropriated on an annual basis. But, but it's there really to be the primary source if, if you have shortfalls. And then the, the third reserve bucket is, this is where we get in the concept of using Fund 106, which are, again, those revenues that come back from the dissolution of redevelopment that come back to the city. And, you know, this is, this is a source of funds that we, we do kind of separate these funds out separately. They're there to be used for economic development, infrastructure purposes. But that would be there, we would be recommending that that would be a source of funds that could replenish the supplemental reserve if it's drawn upon. Another way of mitigating the, the risk to the city of this project is our negotiations with the developer. And so, you know, we've got this, this proposal that the city provide 28 million to the project, but we view that, not only is it not to exceed amount, but we would try to reduce that if possible. For instance, if, if additional EB5 monies were secured, those potentially could supplant the city's, you know, part of the city's investment and you could reduce that 28 million down. Another thing we'd be looking at is we would have some type of project agreement with the developer. And that, that agreement would include provisions, let's say, for example, confirming the, the private, private capitalization as a condition of moving forward. And by that, I mean, your lender would be fully committed, your equity would be fully committed, your EB5 would be fully committed. Or if the EB5 were not fully committed, you'd have to increase your equity or someone else would have to step in. So those are the types of things that you can, you can negotiate from the developer. Then there are also things that could be negotiated. The contractor would probably bond the project. You, you have a guaranteed maximum price if you do design-build where you can... You have a guaranteed maximum price if you do design-build, where you can be somewhat certain that the project is going to be built for what's quoted. So, you know, our concern is if we invest in the conference center, we want to make sure that it's twenty-eight million and not more. And then the timing of the bond issuance is an issue that the finance team dealt with. And you have a couple of options. You could, you can issue the debt up front, or you can do it at completion of construction and take out the construction financing. And so this just kind of shows you, you know, a little chart just shows, you know, if you were to issue the debt just prior to construction in the fall of twenty thirteen, you could capture historically low interest rates. That's great, you know, because interest rates are, low interest rates are key to us making this feasible project. But then, you know, you'd be having risks you'd have to deal with if the project were delayed and you exhausted your capitalized interest, you know, what would you use to make those interest payments until the project was open and generating the revenues off the rooms? And so, you know, we looked at that risk. And then on the other hand, if you issue debt upon completion of the hotel, you've got the potential that interest rates could rise significantly over twenty-four to thirty months. Now, it may be a cheaper option because you're not financing capitalized interest because the hotel's done and it's open and generating revenue and you just issue bonds then and take out the construction financing. But this interest rate risk, I think, is something that it gave all of us on the finance team pause when we really thought about it. And we just had to look at a chart, this chart, the upper blue line is a revenue bond index and the red line is ten-year treasuries. But you can see the fluctuation over the last ten years. And just within the last five years, you've had, the revenue index has been two hundred basis points higher than where it is now. So, you know, if you have an instance like that occur where you're issuing bonds at completion of the project and your interest rates have gone up and the city's made that commitment, and that's the interest rate at the time, you could have less than one coverage or, you know, you can, you know, you're certainly going to be in a worse situation. So anyway, those are, you know, that's something that we're going to continue to look at, but we think the interest rate risk is the biggest issue we'd have to deal with. So, you know, in summarizing the key city issues on this slide, you know, private capitalization is, I think, one of the most important, you know, making sure that developers financing's in place before the city would issue bonds and our money would come into the project. You know, we talked about the impacts on the city's credit rating. We're pretty comfortable with, you know, what Standard and Poor's gave us with the assumptions that we gave them. But if we significantly changed the project in a way that would impact the city's credit rating, then, you know, that would be an issue. We talked about the reserve buckets and the timing, you know. The other one is, you know, again, we want to just verify that we had adequate hotel-generated revenues to cover the lease payments before proceeding. So the next steps for the March twentieth meeting, the developer will be here and the development firm is, the name has changed slightly for this project, as you often do when you have private development projects. It's Encore Garfield Public Private LLC. And they'll be back to present things such as the project design, preliminary construction budget, and most importantly, you know, what they view as their project milestones and when they would envision being ready to move forward. Because as I said earlier, the city is really viewing this project as one we would participate in, obviously as partners, but it's really going to be driven by the developer. So, you know, tonight's presentation didn't have much in the way of detail on the project, but I think it gets you ready in terms of understanding the financial issues and, you know, anyway, in two weeks, you'll be able to see more detail on the project. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thanks, Paul. By way of process, if any, I'll ask if any council members have any direct questions of Paul, clarifying questions. Would you ever request to speak? This is a workshop, so I want to make sure we get the public's comments and then we'll bring it back for comments from the council on the project. So any immediate questions? Mr. Johansson.
Paul, yeah, I guess, you know, one of the big issues is obviously going to be the general fund exposure on this. On your projected debt service coverage, it looks like that's based on, it starts out at a sixty-six percent occupancy, then seventy-one percent, then the balance of your coverage is based on seventy-four percent. And you're saying the sensitivity analysis that you did was a five percent reduction of that, so what, sixty-nine percent occupancy, that it's basically break even?
Well, the sensitivity analysis we did, I think, was specifically targeted at the first few years that the hotel were open. And what we looked at is you could either drop occupancy five percent or the room rate five percent. And you seem to be able, you know, you were able to make your lease payments. The revenues were adequate. And so the issue becomes, I think, less of a concern. You have to go back to the coverage slide. In later years, you're developing a much higher level of coverage so that you could, you know, have, let's say, a downturn such as two thousand and eight, where you had a drop of over ten percent, let's say, in the competitive set room rates. I mean, you know, the sensitivity analysis is going to be real important to, I mean, to continue to do that. But right now, at least in the early years, we think that, you know, we can, we could sustain some reduction in revenues.
What is the average regional rate now, occupancy rate?
You know, I, this is where I'd have to, I'd have to call on an expert because the numbers I have are a little bit old. Brian, I don't know if you could take a shot at that?
One seventy-five.
What? One seventy-five.
Occupancy rate.
And that's in the competitive set?
Occupancy rate's seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent?
Seventy-five.
Okay. Now, on the issue of the conference center, since it is publicly financed, there's an obligation for the city to have beneficial use of that. Is that correct? Or is it just once it's leased? I guess the question is, city's going to be issuing bonds and leasing it and then collecting lease payments. So is there going to be any city priority with the conference center or any arrangement? Or is that going to be coming to us later?
I think that's, well, that hasn't been part of our, that has come up. It's, we're not at the point where we're negotiating directly about issues like that, but I think that's a very good point. I think we would be negotiating for benefits such as those.
All right. I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, Paul, on the EB funds, how realistic is the twenty-five million?
Well, the finance team is questioning EB five and the amounts that are being proposed by the developer because the finance team doesn't have direct experience with EB five. So it's a good question.
Is this, are these, these are federal dollars?
They're federal dollars. We are aware of projects, hotel projects, where EB five has come in. In some cases, you know, there are a couple of projects we're familiar, one at Staples Center down in LA, another up in Seattle, where EB five's been used to construct a hotel. And so we know it's real and it can be used. I think the issues that we've been, we've been raising with the developer is what if? And some of the questions are, what if it just, it takes eighteen months and we're missing something during construction? Are you going to be able to fund that either by increasing your debt, getting a MeZ loan, or bringing in more equity? Those are the types of questions we're asking again because EB five appears to be real, but, you know, there are some questions about the timing.
Somebody wants to speak.
Yeah, please.
Please identify yourself.
Just to clarify, the EB five money is private funding. It's a federally backed program, but it's private money being brought in for the project in exchange for granting a green card.
I'm sorry, would you identify yourself just for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Ken Decker, the city's financial advisor.
Thank you.
So now this is, the city contribution's going to be somewhere in neighborhood of twenty-eight million. I have to assume another two million for the parking structure that we're not talking about yet.
Correct.
So that's thirty million. And so I guess the question I had was the same one that Mark had, and that is, what percentage of the rooms need to be rented or occupied in order to make that bond payment? And you said probably about seventy percent or so, seventy-five percent. And there are some other ways to generate money would be, you know, sales tax and lease payments and all the other kinds of things. I guess I equate this to baseball in some respects, and that is, does that money go into a lockbox and then gets divvied out? Is the supplemental reserve fund, is that our lockbox?
That's, that's a very good question, and we haven't come up with a structure. We are looking at, like at baseball and the way things were done is one model. You know, the supplemental reserve may not be any kind of lockbox. It might be an annual appropriation from the general fund. The money, where does the money sit? It sits in the treasury, but the city has a commitment. It's budgeted that amount if it's necessary. I mean, that's one way it can be done.
Yeah, right, you could do it that way. Okay. Let's see. Couple of other questions.
Come back.
Yeah, I have a couple of other questions.
That's fine, welcome. Mr. Vegas.
Thank you. So this, Paul, it's very good information. I just wanted to, and I know you've brought this up a couple times, you reiterated the importance of protecting the city's credit rating and the city's general fund, which I think we've been talking about certainly since oh seven. And it sounds like you're certainly headed down that path, but I want to understand a little more. In your projected revenue chart, you had a T O T of fourteen percent. Is that what it's currently standing at?
No, T O T is a twelve. What we did just for the purposes of making that chart a little easier to read is we lumped in the two percent surcharge.
That's what it was, okay.
With a twelve.
So that was, okay, so that's helpful distinction because I didn't think it was at fourteen percent yet. So why do the surcharge or is it either or? Is it one and the same in terms of the amount generated? If we were to do a two percent versus raising it or how, why? Why, I mean, you've characterized the revenue sources with four different bullets and T O T being one, surcharge being another. I don't know if you're ready to answer that yet.
Well, you know, there are some complications. If we were to raise T O T throughout the city, it would affect a number of different hotels and motels. And we don't necessarily want to impact those folks to have them help finance this project. In fact, we want this project to be self-supporting. So doing the two percent surcharge would only impose that rate on this hotel. And again, the structures we're looking at, the developer basically agrees to the assessment. And so these are, these are fairly easy changes to make or funding mechanisms put in place. Raising T O T would have some complications.
Okay. And then maybe just sort of a general question about the portion that we are funding or the portion we would conceivably fund, the convention center. So why that portion versus anything else? Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, yeah, I can. Again, you know, I mentioned earlier that Garfield Traub has done a number of public-private partnerships around the country. And this is a model that they've used in other cities where the conference center becomes more of a public facility, as you will. And so we, as the staff, we didn't come up with that idea. We, the developers is familiar with doing projects that way and we thought it was a good idea. And we looked at the examples that they presented to us, but that's the only reason it's structured that way.
Right. So, and then one last, just sort of a comment, because this is a workshop. Lessons learned from other municipalities that have utilized this model would be, I think, important to incorporate as we kind of head down this path and figure out whether or not it's going to work for us. And then I know certainly from, and I'm sure Councilmember Kristoff can speak to this more specifically, but in terms of our lessons learned with the, you know, twelve years ago, having used the lockbox strategy, it's probably best if we go down that path to be very clear about what it is, the intended use of the funds are in box one, two, and three, depending on how we structure it, so that there's no confusion about what it ought to be doing, depending upon the revenues that are generated and placed into those boxes. That's certainly a lesson that we ought to learn from as we worked through those issues with the very successful Rayleigh Field, but those are issues that we need to be mindful of.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. There's one quick question.
One real quick question, and that is, one of the things you talk about, sorry.
Hello, Bob.
Bob Murphy, I was just going to say, I did want to make one distinction about the lockbox of this project. Remember, in baseball situation, they collect all the revenues. The revenues that are driving this are your revenues. Your T O T that come directly to you, the property tax that comes direct to you, and we'll contract for that surcharge. The surcharge and the lease payment could go in lockbox if you want, but those are your monies, they're not a third party in between. Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Well, just to buffer Oscar's point, though, it's something that we understand and maybe the developers of the project will fill the lockbox for us ahead of time. You talk a lot about timing of debt issuances and all these different things. And by the way, this is probably one of the most thorough staff reports I have seen on a construction project that we have done in the twenty-five years that I've been on the council. I really commend you and your team for putting together a very, very thorough staff report. Got a lot of questions and there's a lot of answers also built up into it. But you talk a lot about issue of debt and timing and all of that. And one of the things that I am concerned with, and that is, if we, if there are occurrences or if there are situations that delay the construction or delay the grand opening or whatever you want to call it and all of this, one of the things that really needs to be looked at a little bit, and that's labor peace. We need to, we need to make sure that we have some discussions and see, in essence, what's moving forward. So that'll be one of the issues that I really want to take a look at because I don't want any delays. I love the project, but I don't want any delays and I don't want any of the consternation and things that have gone on in other jurisdictions. So anyway, it's, that's one of the issues I want to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick follow-up. Yeah, I'd also like to make sure that we do have labor peace in this as we move forward. We've got a significant investment of our public funds that are going into this project. But one of the things I'd want to see is just, you don't, I know you can't respond now, but I'd like to be able to have information on the economic impact that this will have on the city because we're plowing T O T, lease payments, tax increment, and a surcharge back into the project. But it's certainly going to benefit the city in terms of jobs. And so I'm looking for the indirect economic benefit of our public investment in this that's going to help the city out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johansson. You know, I'll, just a quick comment and we'll come back for more questions because I do have more questions and direction. But I have to agree with Mr. Kristoff. The staff report was absolutely thorough and I talked to the city manager earlier today and said the same. This was a terrific, well-detailed staff report that gave me a clearer idea of what direction you're suggesting we go towards for the public financing of the conference center. I do see this as a necessary and needed infrastructure in the Bridge District, the conference center that is. And the hotel was always been envisioned in the city for a number of years. I remember former council member Beers told the story and I'm sure Mr. Kristoff was probably there with him, thinking of hotels along the riverfront for a long time. So I commend the staffer moving this forward and really, again, for the thorough job on this. I do have some other questions, but I know we have a public comment on this, so I want to be able to take that first and then we'll come back for questions. Thank you, Paul. So the request to speak comes from Christian Rack.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chris Rack. I'm the president of...
My name is Chris Rack. I'm the president of Unite Here Local 49 in Sacramento and greater Sacramento area. We are the Hotel Workers Union. We represent over 3,000 members throughout the greater Sacramento area. First of all, we want to applaud the council's interest in West Sacramento as a hospitality destination, and also it's a great opportunity to really take advantage of the fantastic riverfront location. But with projects such as these, the devil is always in the details. And I know there's been some mention of job creation. One of the real questions with hospitality jobs is what kind of jobs will be created? Are they going to be good jobs with living wages, with affordable health care, and with retirement security? Or are they going to be minimum wage jobs that drain county and city programs? Our union has worked hard to ensure that hotel and food service workers, like the ones who will ultimately be working in these jobs if they get created, can secure the fair treatment that they deserve. And as financial backers of this project, the city does have a stake, as has been mentioned, in what course the hotel and conference center take. Similar projects such as this one across the river at the Sheraton and the Citizen have had guarantees that workers have a fair process to choose union representation without being forced to engage in expensive labor disputes. Labor peace ensures that public funds are completely protected from risks associated with labor disputes. And the good news is that in several locations where public funds were invested in similar hospitality projects, we have had a good working relationship with Garfield Traub and also separately with Marriott, resulting in these kinds of labor peace agreements that we're describing here. So as you explore this project, we look forward to working with you to ensure that the hotel and conference center is developed with those same guarantees to protect the city and its investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rack. Any other comments? It's a public workshop. So hearing none, we'll bring it back to the council for additional questions and comments.
I do. One of the questions I have is, when will the apartments be constructed? Are they on a dual course or?
The apartments will, right now, the schedule provides that the parking structure will be built first, and then when the walls come up on that, at that point in time is when the Ungars plan to start their residential construction. So both.
So the hotel will be built first?
Actually, the parking structure will begin, the hotel, and it will be completed to the point that the residential can be built around it, and the hotel will be in process at the same time that the apartments are being constructed. That's the current schedule that's being discussed.
Okay, well, that's good, and that's helpful, because one of the things I wouldn't have, one of the things I wouldn't want to have, and that is, the construction of a hotel finished, opened and doing business and all that, and all of the apartment construction going on, you know, about the same, right after that, because that would be a little inconvenience as far as a hotel guest are concerned. Okay, that's good.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Kenny, just briefly, I know there's, was in the past some look at Raleigh's field creating an amphitheater. Has that been considered in this as well, or? I know that's kind of on hold right now, but.
I know that from talking with Jeff Savage that they're very excited and supportive of this hotel, and they see that it will really be, have synergy with the amphitheater that they plan as well as their baseball. But they're still seeking funding, so they're keeping the plans alive, but they have not secured funding for the amphitheater.
I guess the issue was noise, and I know they worked with some of the property owners on previous iterations of projects there on how to buffer this out, and I thought that they had that worked out. So it sounds like they do now as well?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Vegas, any other comment?
Yeah, just a comment and maybe a suggestion for staff. So this certainly has the opportunity to be another defining moment for our riverfront development, but I would, you know, the timing could be certainly perceived as peculiar for folks who are wondering if we're out of our minds issuing, you know, another $30 million in bond debt to enter into this public-private partnership. So I would at least ask that as we move closer to the March 20th, where we're coming back, that I think it's real clear in terms of the revenue sources and how it is we're going to protect the city's general fund, certainly, but identifying the sources once again. And then I think the pros and cons of those sources as we project them out over the course of the 30 years. I think it needs to be a little bit clearer, certainly for the layperson to look in, to be able to read and understand, how is it that we're, you know, able to go down this path and presumably, or potentially, issue another $30 million in bonds, lease revenue to ensure that we are, I mean, I think the upside, the upside, if we're successful, which I'm sure we will be, has the potential to do huge, provide huge benefits to our riverfront. But I think it needs to be easily understood in layman's terms, in terms of the pros and the cons of the different components of the revenue source that would be used to ensure that we're not using city's general fund, because that puts at risk a whole host of other issues that we don't want to be considered on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Vegas. I'll have a few questions, but first a couple of comments. First, on, you know, again, this is, for me, reading, getting this project to us is an exciting and could be a defining moment, and it's a very, possibly transformative project that could ignite the Bridge District. And I think we've all, the council members who are here long before I, have envisioned this sort of project coming to them and have actually entertained similar, or I won't say similar, projects, but certainly projects in this vein. So I would ask that we heed their words of wisdom about what we've learned from the past, but it is still, you know, a moment that we could relish, because, you know, coming out of a recession as we did, to still have the Bridge District ready to develop and still having amenity as a riverfront that could, this could ignite would be important. The one point I wanted to make is on, I agree with Mr. Johansson and Mr. Vegas on the need to really dig down a little deeper into the economic impact of this, as well as understanding, when we say this could activate the waterfront, what more are we talking about in terms of, is if this is that project, then what more could it bring in terms of surrounding economic impact? I'm not looking for an economic study that would slow this down, but I think we just, that the public has a right to understand, when we say this could be a transformative project, what we mean. We already know there's a few developments in the queue to happen in the Bridge District, two housing projects specifically. We talked, I know before, about the streetcar project. All these things are sort of hanging together, but I think that the public has an opportunity to understand that and see what this can do. Secondly, that has to do with the kind of, to me, one of the basic policy questions that this has is the opportunity cost that this is providing. And you're asking, suggesting, proposing that we move forward on a $28 million, up to $28 million, bond issuance. And while we've gotten assurances, or at least written confirmation from standard emporers that the, our credit rating will be in good standing, Mr. Vegas is right, we have two other audiences we have to consider, one is the public, that was fact that we're issuing them, and the other one is, is other projects that we may be bypassing as a result, because the next bond issuance, the next opportunity, we may not have that full capacity, and we may not be willing to jeopardize the city's bond rating. So I think those, that economic impact and that kind of view of what's at stake in the Bridge District is an important view for us, because that's one of the policy choices we'll be left with. I think Mr. Kristoff is right to be concerned about, you know, how the funds get back to us, and that's kind of on the repayment ability of the bond issuance. But to me, there is another side to that, which is, again, what are we, what may we be, what other things may we be passing up to do this? So I know we were looking at, based on your projections, a $49 million increase, or at least a $49 million.
If I could part response to the issue of, you know, what opportunity cost do we have by issuing this debt? What will we be foregoing? And we, when we talked to S&amp;P, we actually gave them some scenarios, and so we gave them a scenario that had issuance of debt in excess of the amount that we've talked about tonight. So we added another, you know, I think it was 13 million onto that amount. We said, what would that do to our credit rating? And they also reaffirmed in a stable. Now, that's not all the answer to your question, but I felt like it was important that you knew that we were thinking about that, and in particular in terms of city-issued debt.
Yeah. Thank you. That certainly helps the question I'm getting at, and I think as we move forward again to the next stages, because I do have a lot of questions on the private financing that's being proposed, and I'm not going to go into too much detail on those, because I think they'll be here on the 20th, and we can dig in a little around that. But I think it is, in context of this discussion around our commitment $28 million, it is, I want to make sure it's important that we have a right to ask these questions, because this is a public-private partnership, and we are every bit dependent on their financial and financing structure, that that works on their side as well as ours, I mean, ours on our side. So the questions that came to mind regarding their structure was all around the EB5 financing, the sequencing of the construction project, because based on the financing nowhere view, it starts with the equity partners coming in first, their money, and then the Marriott key money coming in first, which is somewhere around $9 million, and then to be followed by either bank debt financing and/or EB5 financing, both of which aren't secured at this point. So that's what, right now, is catching more of my attention than sort of the, I think we have a methodology in place to capture buckets of cash to make sure they're available for those lease payments, I mean, the bond payments that we'll have. But again, if, what I know about lending, which is a little bit, is the most, biggest risk we have here is time. And we start the project, and there's time delays. The further it goes out, you've articulated the interest rate risk we would have if we decide to go in, the city issues bonds early. There's also interest rate risk for the lenders and the construction, I'm sure the construction financing they're getting, and there's always escalating, there could be escalating labor costs and other factors that could drive this sideways. So again, I'll save those for the next meeting, but certainly those are questions that are on my mind. In regards to this project, I was, I listened into Mr. Johansson's question, because I was equally concerned about the sensitivity or the break-even payments, and I think you answered the question, or I think I saw it, but in your, the 5% reduction come, the 5% reduction that you show, and this is on page seven, that's to the occupancy rate showed on exhibit D, correct?
Correct.
And I want to make sure I'm clear, that the total tax collections is everything, the lease payments, the TOT, the surcharge, and whatever else, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And did, as we talk about our, the timing of our debt issuance, obviously, we are in historic interest rate, historic interest rate window, but did, talking to our financing team is, when is that window closing? Now, I know that I'm, no one has that, yeah, I know, but.
Ken may have his crystal ball with him. Ken, you want to give a?
I know a report I saw recently.
Ken Decker with Del Rio Advisors, City's Financial Advisor. I mean, I wish we could put a crystal ball on that. I mean, I believe you're in the lending business, so if we knew that, I think we probably wouldn't be here. But clearly, as the economy turns around, as job growth begins to come back, I think you're going to start seeing inflationary pressures which would rise, which would raise interest rates. So I clearly think that, now, I think the real big question that all the economists, CNBC, listen to all these folks, how long is that going to take? I think that's the magic question. I think ultimately, there will be rising interest rate environment. The question is, when is it going to be? And that's dependent upon job creation and the economy turning around, but I think you're starting to see that beginning to occur, even here in the valley, because I work with a lot of public agencies here in the valley, and you're getting a lot of developers coming in and planning for new development, and it's starting to happen.
Well, I guess the question is, is do we establish a threshold of, even if hypothetically, and I hate to use hypotheticals, but interest rates start rising next week slowly, I mean, do we build that into our, when could we?
We did a sensitivity analysis on the interest rate environment, and there was a significant impact. We looked at whether the bonds were issued today in this low-interest rate environment, which, you know, on that graph that was up there, December 6 was the all-time low-interest rate for the municipal market. So we're just past that, we're off a little bit from those days. But we did take a look at interest rate sensitivity. If rates go up 100 basis points or 1%, we're looking at about $175,000 a year of increased debt service. If we wait, do the bonds now versus when we do it at the end of construction? If it goes up 200 basis points, it's about $460,000 a year of additional debt service. That's a pretty significant increase with interest rate risk, and that's the reason that we've made it one of our key components in this analysis.
In your analysis, you've, we've built in an assumption on the lease payments, so the tax returns, and I, we haven't negotiated that yet, so that's still, or have we?
No, you're correct. The lease payments represent the operator's use of our facility, and the amount that was proposed by the developer has not been negotiated, and it gets back to the question earlier about, you know, what would we want out of this facility in terms of beneficial use? So all those issues are, would be negotiated, and they have not been at this time.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure, because any upward or downward move obviously would, so, okay, you clarified that, thank you. That's really all the questions that I had on our financing. I would just echo a lot of what was said already about the importance of solidifying our approach to, sort of the buckets of if revenue payments aren't there, how would we protect the general fund? That is very important to all of us and to me as well. So thanks to the other councilmembers for bringing that up.
One quick question. Paul, as I was reading through the, you know, the private capital, then the private equity, is 4.7 million, is that, is that going to be adequate? Or are you guys still negotiating that?
It may or may not be adequate. We have the same questions you have about the adequacy of the equity, and so those are things that we're continuing to, you know, in our meetings, you know, we're meeting in a room. We haven't sat down with the developer and really, well, I mean, we've sat down with them, but we haven't really started something that would be like a negotiation yet. We've been mostly just trying to get an understanding of their proposal, but that's a question that we raise as well.
Okay. Because, yeah, I'd like to, on the 20th or whenever you do come back, that'll be one of the questions I have as far as the equity is concerned. I just want to make sure it's significant enough to cover some of the costs and the various things that I know you're working on. Thank you.
Well, I mean, that leads to one of the key questions, and I know you've asked it, about the private financing, is the amount of debt they're taking on, and knowing what their ability to cover that going forward is, that would be equally important to me.
You know, I can't say that the one thing we see as a good sign is actually the new development entity includes both Garfield Traub and the equity partner. So, you know, having the equity partner part of the development group is a positive sign.
Absolutely. Thank you, Paul. Any other questions, counsel? You have enough? Okay, this was a public workshop, no actions being taken tonight, but apparently we will have this on the agenda again in two weeks. Okay. Thank you. On to item 10, which is another workshop on draft 2013 West Sacramento Bicycle, Pedestrian and Trails Master Plan. I'm going to ask Mr. Kristoff to manage the meeting for just a moment.
This is also a workshop, and it's on the draft 2013 West Sacramento Bicycle, Pedestrian Trails Master Plan. Mike Lukin.
Good evening, Mike Lukin, Transportation Manager for the city. Tonight is a culmination of quite an effort over the past two years to update our Bicycle, Pedestrian and Trails Master Plan. Tonight, we have Charlie Alexander, who's the project manager with Fair and Peers, our consultant on the project, and also Bob Grannie with Fair and Peers. If there's any questions, Charlie is going to be doing the majority of the presentation. So very quickly, as I stated, this is. So, very quickly, as I stated, this is a culmination of a large effort, a lot of public input over the past two years in the form of workshops, meetings in front of the Economic Development Advisory Commission and the Parks Commission, all of which resulted in comments coming back that helped build what we see as a, a very exciting master plan document that we have before you this evening. This plan will ultimately allow the city not only to plan its bicycle pedestrian trail and pedestrian trails and other non-vehicular routes throughout the city, but will also set a precedent as our plan will be one of the first in the region to have what is termed a low-stress bicycle route concept. And Mr. Alexander's going to be going through that this evening. This plan will also allow the city to again compete effectively for funding for bicycle and pedestrian funding coming from the state and federal government. We have been in a hiatus over the past few years where we were not ineligible for funding, but really, the, the bar was set so high with other communities who had completed master plans that met the criteria of the state and of SECOG that we, had we submitted an application, we wouldn't be competitive. So, this will allow, again, allow us to, to effectively compete for a number of projects that you have in your plan. Wanted to point out a couple other items before Charles, Charlie goes through his presentation, and that is another activity that we have underway that relates directly to this plan, and that is our Safe Routes to Schools grant program, something that was started after this project, but very pivotal to the community. That's an analysis, analysis that's being done by WAC Sacramento, looking at all of our K-8 schools and safe routes for pedestrians surrounding all those K-8 schools. We just started that project last year, we're scheduled to complete that in summer of 2014. But we'll be bringing forward to the, to the council at certain key points, findings from that study, and, and as applicable, we'll be amending the, this draft, or, excuse me, what will be an adopted plan, amending this plan to incorporate the findings of that document. Lastly, I wanted to mention that the difference in this document was, was presented to the, as it is being presented tonight to the council, versus what was presented to the Economic Development Advisory Commission and Parks Commission, and that being the prioritization of projects. The council in its budget authority is the primary, primary entity that prioritizes projects and funding. And so, this is a culmination of a staff effort where we put together a rating and ranking of projects that are included in the back of your document. So, this is something new to the, to the process that will be a subject of this workshop tonight. With that, I'll, unless there's any preliminary questions, I'll turn it over to Charles, and then we can have this workshop. We will then bring it back to you again on the 20th, incorporating any changes that you wish to have this, to make this evening, any other analysis you wish us to have, and then we will ask for formal adoption of the plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mike. Just wait for a second for the presentation to pop up. And while I wait, I will, there it is, introduce myself. First, thank you, Mr. Ledesma and fellow members of the council. Mike mentioned, my name is Charlie Alexander, I'm a transportation engineer with Fair and Peers, and I've been working for the city to develop the 2013 West Sacramento Bicycle Pedestrian and Transportation Master Plan. Quickly start off with some background on this project. As Mike mentioned, there are several funding sources through which having an adopted Bicycle Pedestrian Trails Master Plan allows the city to qualify for funding for. One of those is the state's bicycle transportation account. According to the bicycle transportation account legislation, cities must have an adopted plan, no more than five years old, to compete for funding. The original bicycle and pedestrian transportation plan for the city of West Sacramento was developed and adopted in 1990, and then updated again in 1995. So, since the 1990, 1995 plan is more than five years old, the city has not been able to qualify for that funding source. As Mike mentioned, there are several other local, regional, state funding sources that having a bicycle and pedestrian and trails master plan makes the city more competitive when they're applying for funds through those sources. So, having this plan adopted will increase the likelihood of the city's success in competitive grant applications. The funding for this specific effort was funded through the Caltrans Transportation Planning Grant Program. The city applied for a community-based transportation planning grant to the amount of $133,000 for the fiscal year 2010-2011 award cycle. The city staff initiated the plan in 2011. It's a two-year grant cycle, so the plan has to be completed within two years of starting. And the deadline for that, to have all the work complete, was February 28th of this year. So, we were able to complete the work and are now carrying through the plan through the council proceedings in accordance with the Caltrans requirements. Myself and Fair and Peers came on in 2012 to complete the plan for the city. The purpose of this plan is ultimately to develop a vision for bicycle and pedestrian transportation in West Sacramento. That vision is meant to supplement the city's general plan by identifying infrastructure needs specifically for those users, for pedestrians, bicyclists, and anyone else that's using the trails. Focus primarily on increasing convenience, comfort, and safety amongst all those users. A big goal of the plan is to increase walking and biking in the city and to establish priorities and next steps for projects. Really quick flow chart that describes the plan development process. It started with a large amount of background data collection, understanding where the existing bike and ped facilities are, looking at collisions and safety statistics, and then taking that understanding of the existing environment in West Sacramento, and going through an extensive public outreach process, which I'll describe later, to understand exactly what does the public have to say and what do the residents have to say about what's working in the city and what needs improvement. Following the data collection and the public outreach, we developed the recommendations and draft plan, and then take it back to the public and the stakeholders and ask them how it could be improved or refined. And following that stakeholder outreach, we're developed and, we've developed and are now presenting the plan. Public outreach occurred in several different ways, the first of which was public workshops back in 2011. There were three workshops hosted, some of those, I think two of those were in the West Sacramento Community Center, and then one was in the West Sacramento Recreation Center. During that time, there was also an online survey, which gained over 250 responses, the majority of which were West Sacramento residents themselves. We also got several interested parties from the neighboring city of Sacramento, a lot of people from Davis, obviously, who commute, commute through West Sacramento were interested as well. We had stakeholder workshops. Stakeholders kind of were in two categories, either technical stakeholders belonging to local agencies or local nonprofit organizations, and then community stakeholders who were citizens that wanted to stay engaged in the process throughout the entirety. So, we had workshops for those stakeholders in December of 2012 and January of 2013 to review the draft proposals of the plan. And then we presented, as Mike mentioned, the draft plan to the Parks and Community Services Commission and the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and incorporated their comments prior to submitting the draft to city council. Just to give you a sample of the public outreach process, in both the public workshops that were done in 2011 and the stakeholder workshops done in late 2012 and earlier this year, we had several different exhibits that citizens and stakeholders could interact with. A lot of that was mapping, where we're asking people exactly where they have concerns or where they suggest improvements. And a lot of those exhibits were interactive and asking them specific questions meant to inform us in the plan process. I'm going to describe the proposed bikeway network, and first I want to just give a quick definition of terms here. We have several unpaved trails. A good example of an existing unpaved trail is the Clarksville Branch Line Trail, gravel surface, mostly walkers, runners, people on mountain bikes. Class 1 bike paths are very similar, except they're paved, so they have an exclusive right-of-way, but people can ride on road bikes or rollerblades, skateboards. And then we have class 2 bike lanes, these are delineated spaces on street for bicyclists. An example here is shown on West Capitol Avenue right in front of City Hall. And then class 3 bike routes, which are shared roadways for bicyclists and vehicles. As they're proposed by this plan, bike routes would be similar to something that we see on the Sacramento side of the river on M Street, connecting midtown to Sacramento State. The maps of existing and proposed bicycle facilities are shown in the plan. The proposed facilities largely break down into three categories: bike lanes on major roadways, bike paths along what I call opportunity rights of ways, these are things like waterways, railroads, utility corridors, and then bike routes on low-volume, low-speed roadways, those are the shared roadways. In some cases, we do have some unpaved trails recommended in the network as well. And as Mike mentioned, we also put a big emphasis on this plan in developing a connected network of what we call low-stress bike facilities. And these are really bikeways that have low-traffic speed and low-traffic volume that are meant to attract the majority of bicyclists who identify themselves not as extremely confident and brave and spandex-wearing, but interested but concerned. So, we're really trying to increase mode share and draw out that significant proportion of the community. Plan also includes several recommendations for pedestrians, including crosswalk enhancement policies, and then streetscape implementation planning for several of the roadways identified in the city as needing improvement, and those are Jefferson Boulevard, Enterprise Boulevard, and then West Capitol Avenue. You recall that West Capitol Avenue currently has an adopted streetscape master plan, so this plan supports the existing adopted plan for West Capitol Avenue. Mike mentioned that Public Works is working with WAC Sacramento to prepare a Safe Routes to School Plan for all of the K-8 schools in West Sacramento. Because of the funding source of that plan, it could not address River City High School. We were able to do that as a part of this plan, so we've looked at pedestrian and bicycle access improvements to improve safety to River City High School. Finally, the plan includes several other, other contents, goals and policies, recommendations for bike parking, and it includes a section on education encouragement and enforcement strategies, and then a robust implementation section, which includes cost estimates, prioritization, design standards, funding sources, and a section describing ways of encouraging NEV use, neighborhood electric vehicle use in the city. One important thing I want to note is that the prioritization was done objectively according to five different factors. Those are how well each of the projects access, accesses key destinations in the cities. Key destinations included schools and major commercial centers and major regional destinations, regional destination like Rayleigh Field. Also included gap closure, projects that close a gap in the existing bikeway network, whether or not the bikeways were part of the low-stress network and will attract the majority of bicyclists, the level of utilitarian or commuter use expected by the, by the proposed project, and then the project feasibility. Really quickly, I want to describe some of the high priority projects. Before I do that, I do want to say that we circulated the draft plan at the staff level to SAB, the Sacramento area bicycle advocates, and received comments and incorporated those comments into the draft that was submitted in your council packet. And then we also circulated the, the draft to SECOG. SECOG staff are the authority that approves the plan to Caltrans to qualify for the bicycle transportation account. Before we adopt the plan, we find it useful to have SECOG basically give us comment that may need to be incorporated before they will recommend it for approval. So, we've gotten that comment, and we will incorporate it into the final plan when it comes back to council on the 20th. So, now the high priority projects, these are projects that had a very high benefit. They access major destinations, they close gaps, they're part of the low-stress network, and we expect a large amount of utilitarian use. And then they're also high feasibility, so these are projects that the city could move forward with to either implement themselves or, in many cases, pursue grant projects over the next several years. So, those include several class 1 bike path projects, including the paving of the Clarksville Branch Line Trail. The funding is already in place to pave that trail between the canal and River City High School, so the intention is to pave the remaining length of it. The Sacramento River Levy, that is the opening to public access and paving the levee trail that exists roughly between the I Street Bridge and, and the River District on the north part of the city. Then the Main Drain Parkway, which has been a project that the city's been considering, several residents have indicated that it's a very popular project that would roughly follow the alignment of the main drain canal. Includes a bike path around Lake Washington, and then conversion, potential conversion of the railroad portion of the Jefferson Boulevard Bridge over the canal. We've heard that the railroad is interesting in pursuing abandonment of that facility and would convert it to, we could convert it to a bike path in the future. Also includes several class 2 bike lane projects. The primary one is on Linden Road, west of Jefferson Boulevard, and then several small gap closure projects in the city. And then class 3 bike route projects, including what we call the West Acre Road Bicycle Boulevard, and then the Bright Park Bike Boulevard. This is a workshop, so we're here to answer your questions and to hear from the public. So, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Okay, any, this is a workshop, so any, Thomas, Mr. Johansson?
Yes, I, I, I didn't hear anything...
Mr. Kristoff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Kristoff.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear anything about equestrian.
Yes. We, throughout the plan process, we coordinated with LESTRA, the West Sacramento Trail Riders Association, and addressed equestrian use of the trails primarily in two ways. In some cases, we proposed the unpaved trails in places where we heard there was a strong desire to have equestrian loops through Southport. And we also developed design standards for, for the class 1 bike path projects that should include either a separate graded pathway for equestrian use or a wide graded shoulder unpaved for equestrian use. So, that's how we incorporated equestrian...
You're looking into it?
Yes.
Okay. One of the things that I didn't hear, or that I heard of a lot of in your report was Southport and West Capitol Avenue and West Sac proper. I didn't hear a lot about Broderick and Brighton. And I want to make sure that they just don't fall through the cracks. I know that Bright Park has some areas there that are being considered, but at the same time, I'd like to see that extended on Sacramento Avenue or some other places that can, so that folks can get down to IKEA or they can get to the IKEA Center and all the way from, we'll say, I Street Bridge to there, because I want to include Broderick and Bright in all of whatever we do as far as the bicycle and, and, and walking trails.
Absolutely. We'll work with city staff to make sure that the proposed network connects those neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Johansson?
Thank you. On page 23 on your goals and policies, one of the problems that we have in a lot of new development is we've got walking paths that go through the developments, and at the end of the development, they stop. There is, either is a brick wall or, and it's the start of a new development. So, you don't really have contiguousness. And I didn't really see that in the goals and policies.
Okay.
Because what you want is, is a free-flowing, whether it's walking or biking, without having to, for example, go a quarter of a mile around a particular development to catch up with the path again. And so, I don't see any of those on this, and particularly when you get into the areas that aren't developed yet in Southport, when we're coming through with having new projects come in, you know, without having that articulated, then we're left here to make sure that we catch those types of things. So, some type of concept that there should be, you know, a walking or should be a free-flowing process rather than, you know, block by block.
Okay.
On, let me see. The, the issue with the shower and charging facilities, you know, I know that there's going to be a cost to that, and I think there's a proposal here to mandate that as part of this policy, to have some type of mandatory shower facility. Is that what, am I seeing that? The city says on page 52, the city should consider adopting 2010 Caltrans Green Standards Code.
Sure.
Basically, for buildings over 10 tenants' occupancies provide shower and changing facilities. So, I, I mean, I'm not interested in mandating that at this point.
Sure.
But is that, is that what this is saying? It's mandated, or is this...
Yeah, it's, it's consider adopting, so it, it's something for further consideration, but...
Yeah. I would definitely want to know what the cost of those facilities are because, you know, obviously, there's going to be some people that need it, but other people aren't going to, and if the city's paying for that, we need to see what the cost benefit is going to be. I like the... I like the priorities. I think those are right in terms of which projects are coming up first. And the last preliminary comment is on the NEVs. Thank you for including this in the analysis. And I would definitely want to look at developing an NEV transportation plan. But as we're looking through this, we don't really know what the cost of that. We have cost per mile for class one bike paths. There is a difference with NEV versus regular class one. It's a little bit wider. So I'd like to see what the cost of that is. And particularly NEVs, we have these main arteries, for example, the Clark'sburg Branch Line, areas that we could potentially connect up with larger transportation. For example, if we are successful in having the streetcar come down to a maintenance facility, you know, by the Pioneer Bridge, then that would be a place where you could stage NEVs or a number of different modes that would go down into the arteries. So, you know, as we look in the future, look at, these neighborhood vehicles take a lot of traffic off the roads. And, you know, in terms of environmental benefit, it's great. So I would, I would definitely encourage, I mean, that's the direction council wants to go, to address these NEVs. And then the last question is on your map of existing facilities. I noticed on, you know, we now have a new bridge that's going across the Barge Canal. I noticed that your class one doesn't include that. And so whoever's riding on that class one would have to go all the way up to Jefferson, loop around, and come back down on South River Road. And wouldn't it make sense to have a class one go across that as well?
Sorry, just to be clear, you're talking about the new bridge, the South River Road over the canal?
Right.
Okay. And then...
Because it connects on both sides. You have class one on both sides of the Barge Canal, but rather than going across a bridge that's going to be new at that point.
Right.
Like it would be a proposed class one, you have to go all the way to the tracks.
All the way to the Jefferson Boulevard.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is okay until it gets built, but it seems that if you're going to build a bridge, at least a class two or some...
Yeah, I believe the...
Is that what it is?
The proposed network does have class two bike lanes on it. And I believe that's consistent with the current design for the South River Road Bridge.
Okay.
So actually putting a class one would require, I believe it would require design modifications to that bridge.
Okay.
Do you want to speak to that?
Unfortunately, at this point in time, our budget for the new bridge is fairly limited at the $10 million TCIF funding. So that's why we had, at least at this point in time, projected using a class two scenario.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. And then finally, there's a, well, there's a stretch by North Harbor and Riverbank. It looks like there's a big gap in the class one. Is there a, this is North Harbor by Lisbon, Riverbank. It looks like it's, there's an existing class one by Carey Street, and then it turns into what a class two at that point, or class three, actually.
Oh, you're talking the very north end up on the river?
Right, the very north end.
Yeah. There were some concerns over the ability, because of some of the uses that are running on the river, to develop a class one. And looking at Harbor Boulevard and Riverbank Road in that stretch, the traffic volume and traffic speeds are relatively low, that we thought that connecting it through the street network would be sufficient.
So as easy riders, it's pretty much a piece of cake in there then.
Yeah.
All right. And then finally, there's a stretch on South, where is this? Southport Parkway. It's right around Golden Gate. It's right above Oakland Bay.
Okay.
I know that's a little bit of a treacherous area right now, and it doesn't look like there's really much, there's not, there's, I guess, a shoulder there that's a little bit treacherous. It's a class two. I think, I think I saw it on your traffic studies, that's, there was an accident or some incident around that area, too.
Okay.
I think it's just, it's kind of a dangerous, another dangerous area we need to take a look at.
Just to be clear, this is Southport, north of Oakland Bay?
Right, right.
Okay.
It's just that right turn bend there. And that's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Vegas.
So as you, so once the plan is adopted and we're able to qualify and apply for funding, so what's the criteria you use? I mean, is it driven largely based on the cost per project or is it safety issues or concerns? Or what would determine the prioritization of all, because there's a whole host of issues that are all over town?
Sure. Yeah, it depends largely on the grant funding source, which projects are most competitive. The VTA, the Bicycle Transportation Account, those are most competitive for projects that increase commuter bicycling. So that's why we included the level of utilitarian cycling expected from the facilities and the prioritization. Highway Safety Improvement Funds, those are going to be largely reducing collisions, which is why we included collision analysis. So, and, you know, the SECOG sources, other state sources, they all have kind of different overarching goals. So what we've tried to do is provide staff with as much information as possible so as they're pursuing those projects, they can include that relevant information. And then we've tried to develop a prioritization scheme that largely mimics several of the goals of those funding sources.
Okay. I guess, so I guess, and that makes sense, and I kind of figured that's what you're going to say, so I think I'd like to just piggyback a little bit on what Bill said earlier. In spite of that, it seems to me, or in spite of that, in addition to that, it would seem, I think, in our citywide interest to ensure that there's a degree of equity here, because I know that largely the fund source is going to be driven by the safety and the commuter issues. But the recreational component, where older neighborhoods typically aren't going to get the same level of love, really, I think, needs to be considered. And so I know that in your list of prioritizations, you have, for example, a series of, which I think are some of the cheaper projects, in the class three expansions, certainly in the older neighborhoods, the Todd Hunter to Riverbank and the Cummings to Fremont and the Harbor to Todd Hunter. Those projects, at the cost of $10,000 per mile, you can probably do all of those projects under $10,000, because I don't think any of those, or all three of those combined, would equate to $10,000. So I would at least pitch what I think Bill was alluding to, and that is creating some equity, because the fund sources for those probably aren't going to be readily available as they might be for some of the other parts of town. So I make that pitch to support what I think Bill was alluding to.
Okay.
But I would say, though, that we do need to certainly keep an eye on what I know we've repeatedly heard. I know that the school district has brought it to our attention, at least the two-by-two, and that is that Higgins-Jefferson High School crossing, that's been a huge issue, not only as a safety issue, well, primarily as a safety issue, but it's been repeatedly brought up since the high school was built as a problem area. Okay. So that would be it.
Thank you.
Just a few comments, and I'll piggyback on to Mr. Vegas's product, which is that Higgins-Jefferson. I'm looking on page 65, the River City High School implementation. I want to see, are you addressing it on the item one? Is that the one?
Let me just make sure. So you're referring to...
Crosswalk, crossing the north leg of Jefferson-Higgins Road.
Okay.
That's the one?
Should be, yeah. Same one.
Okay.
Yes, we are looking at that. So, yeah, item one is adding the crosswalk, the missing crosswalk of the four to that traffic center.
And that's going to be covered through the, the safe routes, the school?
Yeah, all of, all of these projects would be eligible for Safe Routes funding. There is some turmoil right now at the state level, understanding what's going to happen to that funding source in the next budget that Governor Brown has proposed. But per, we think that whether or not the Safe Routes funding source specifically exists, there will be a, still a big push to improve safety near schools with those funding sources. So we do think this will be eligible in the long term.
Okay. Just, just to add a little bit of my own parochial interest here, I appreciate you adding item three and four on that table as well. I was looking for those around the safety and around Linden, called Linden, between Stonegate and basically Jefferson.
Yeah, we've heard that a lot from the residents.
Yeah, and between 2:00 and 3:30, it is a mass of teenagers buttressing both sides, crossing with really no fear of anything.
Yeah.
So it's, it also brings up a point, because most of those kids are venturing into the shopping center, where there are no, and this is a pet peeve of mine, because as a planning commissioner, 10 years ago, whenever it was, we approved that, that Southport Town Center. I really tried to get it to be more pedestrian-friendly, because there's no walkway for them coming from the north side of the campus. And they, what they do is they go back the back roadway there where the trucks go through.
Yeah.
It's a little dangerous for them. But I think the point it brings to me is, and it's not in your goals, but it would be one I think we might want to consider, which is, for new developments, and even where we can on existing establishments, we really need to push them to be more pedestrian-friendly, even pedestrian, I think I used the term with the Southport Town Center, pedestrian-encouraging. I think that's one thing, that's an element that's just missing. I get adding the bicycle facilities. We can, I mean, we have, the bicycling community in West SAC is just, I think it's really emerging in this community. And I know quite a few people who are really taking advantage of the routes we have, the natural circulation routes, and they enjoy it. But I think that people are, people want to walk. And I went back and looked, and I forgot what page it's on, on why people aren't going, and I think it's, aren't walking more. And one is distance, and two, I think, had to do with the lack of interest. If you told me the page, I'd find it.
Yeah, we can find it really quickly. It's the, you're talking about the graph, right?
The graph, yeah.
Yeah.
Safety, it was the top one, I just talked about.
Yeah, page 60, sorry. So number one, travel distance; number two, lack of sidewalks or trails.
Yeah, and like sidewalks, promenades, or trails. Well, we have one on the, right there on the Clark'sburg Trail in Southport, but there really are no other, you know, sort of, just venues to just walk and be, have a, I don't say a scenic trip, but certainly someplace where pedestrians feel safe. And I always blame myself for the Southport Town Center could be more pedestrian-friendly. People are walking through the middle of that parking lot, getting from Starbucks to Target to the Nugget, and just could be, could have been better. So if we, as development grows on both the north and the south side, when I say the north, it's along West Capital, I know we're having plans already around there, if we can find ways for the commercial buildings to be very pedestrian-friendly, I think that would be, encourage the walking we're looking for, and people would feel more safe doing it. I don't have anything else. I, you know, I will say that the outreach on this was really, really well-done, because I know, as I said, a lot of bicyclists in town. And I saw Facebook posts, and I saw a lot of emails going about to our little community, encouraging people to get out to these. And it shows, because I can see a lot of the things I've heard over the last couple of years showing up in here. But, but I would, so I appreciate the work you did to get out there. I would echo some of what Councilmember Kristof and Vegas said, just making sure we care for those who maybe didn't have a voice in this and didn't get to those meetings, and making sure that there's equitable, we think about the parts of town that maybe aren't as equally treated in this stuff. So anyway, I appreciate the work you've done. Is there any other questions or comments? No? So this was a public workshop? You got enough?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other thing I need to alert them to, Mike? Guys coming back? What's the next steps?
The next step will be, it will come back to you on the 20th for adopt, and we'll incorporate all the comments that we had tonight, anything that comes in between now and the 20th, incorporate that in the plan, incorporate SECOG's comments, and bring it back to you for adoption on the, for consideration and adopt, hopefully adoption on the 20th.
Okay, terrific. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Okay, that concludes our reg, oh, just go ahead.
As this is a workshop, we would ask you to open up to any public comments. It's one of the requirements of the grant.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I didn't, we don't have any requests to speak on this, but I will open up if there's any public comment on the master plan. Thank you, Mike. Would anybody like to speak on the pedestrian? Nope? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, team. All right, moving on to, that's it for our regular agenda, for our general administration functions, council calendar.
I guess, Mr. Mayor Potem, I wanted to point out a couple of changes to the calendar. The streetcar policy committee meeting, steering committee meeting is going to be on March 29th from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. in Sacramento. It's currently listed on your calendar on April 3rd. Also, on the April calendar, the council meeting schedule is incorrect. We are only meeting once in April, and that will be on the 10th at 7:00 p.m. The meetings on the 3rd and the 17th were canceled when the council previously adopted their schedule. And we are going to be talking to the Chair of the Port Commission about possibly moving the Port Commission to the 10th, so there would just be one meeting for everybody.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Any other council calendar issues? No? City manager report?
Just briefly, Mayor Potem and council members, next Wednesday is the Port Commission's special meeting. We've done a lot of work on the business plan. We'll also have negotiations in closed session about a potential master lease for the North Terminal. So that closed session starts at 4:45, and the Port Commission starts at 5:15, Wednesday.
Okay. Any questions? Nope. Moving on, city attorney report? Staff direction from city council members? Anything? Nope. Feature agenda item request by council? I do have one, I can follow up with Chris online, which is, for the 20th meeting, he's trying to get her proclamation for the March for Meals, for the Meals on Wheels. We've been doing it the last couple of years. That's all. Thanks. Bill, you had a request earlier today about getting, asking staff direction, or providing the JPA.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'd like to, for animal control services, I think you have it down, I'd just like to get back just a thumbnail.
Yeah, for an agreement with...
Agreement with Sacramento, what it would cost.
Okay. Anything else? That's all. Do you have a motion adjourned?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.